Good evening. The September 24, 2019 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a pitch form located on the table on the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. James Phillips, Program Specialist, Extracurricular Activities and Driver's Education, please introduce the individual who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayer, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs, good evening. Tonight, Forest High School student, Ms. Elise Bauer, will provide our inspiration and pledge. In inspiration herself, Elise excels in academics, maintaining a 4.57 GPA while also being a team leader within the Wildcat Swim program. Without further ado, Ms. Elise Bauer.
Good evening.
Evening.
I would like to just share with you a little bit about my background in swimming and how it has been an integral part of my life. Living in Florida, we know that there is water everywhere, from lakes and oceans to swamps and retention ponds. These waters can pose real danger to anyone who doesn't know how to swim. Knowing this, the first chance my parents got to enroll me into swim lessons, they did. I was two and a half years old. They say I was very scared and cried the first day I went, but by day three, I wanted to jump off the high dive. They enrolled me through the summer and then again the next year. When I turned five years old, my parents told me I had to find something to do. "You're not going to sit around all day playing video games," they said. My first response was, "I want to swim." And so it began. My parents took me down to the CF pool to try out for the Patriot Summer League. There I was with my Little Mermaid suit on, my goggles and towel ready to go. Little did my parents know at the time how serious the swim team really was or what kind of commitment we were in for. After another summer of more swim lessons, I made the team. I started practicing a couple of times a week and began competing at meets shortly after that. As far back as I can remember, I have been swimming, and as far back as I can remember, I have loved it. For the past 12 years, I have spent the majority of my life in a pool. It is where my day begins and where it ends. Swimming has no season. It is year-round. Six days a week, two a day practices, three times a week, for four hours a day. I am in the pool for 18 hours a week, 72 hours a month, every month, and 3,744 hours a year. And that's not including the numerous meets I attend during the year. But you know what? I wouldn't trade it for the world. Why you might ask, and who in their right mind enjoys going back and forth in a pool, staring at the same black line over and over again, day after day at the crack of dawn, only to get out and reek of chlorine all day while you go to school? Yes, we swimmers are a special breed, but what I have gotten out of it is worth so much more. The phrase "that which does not kill me makes me stronger" is very much true about swimming. Some days, I do feel as if it will kill me, but swimming has helped me make me the person I am today, and it will continue to form me into the person I will become. Swimming has taught me confidence, discipline, time management, hard work, and determination. It has taught me a love for competitiveness and how to handle defeat. I have learned to crave that feeling when I perform well, both in and out of the water. I can't even describe the feeling of standing on a podium, getting a gold medal hung around your neck, after seeing all of the hard work come to fruition. I am a nationally and world-ranked swimmer. I have been invited to swim at the Olympic Training Center and have traveled around the country to swim at national championships, where I have qualified for the 2020 U.S. Olympic Trials, and have been named to the National Junior Team to represent Team USA. Because of the lessons swimming has taught me, I work hard on my schoolwork because I know that I won't always have swimming, but I will always have to work hard to succeed in life. I wouldn't be the person I am today, hardworking, focused, and dedicated, if it wasn't for the experiences and life lessons that swimming has allowed me to be a part of. I am thankful for what it has taught me and the opportunities it has offered me. I look forward to representing Ocala, Marion County, the Central Florida Marlins, and Forest High School at the Olympic Trials next year, and I thank you for recognizing my accomplishments here tonight.
Do you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't leave so quick.
It's not very often we have a future in limping in front of us.
Yes, it's amazing. It's amazing. And to have something that you're so passionate about is wonderful, isn't it? And thanks to your parents for putting your foot down and nixing the video games at a young age. Look where it's taken you. So congratulations, and wow, we're proud to have you in our midst.
And congratulations. It's...even though I was raised and born and raised in Florida, I really didn't know that many swimmers, even though I was from Palm Beach County. I didn't know, except as beach bunnies, that's about was the limit. I didn't really know, not really ever attended a lot of swim meets or anything like that, which, being raised in Florida, you'd think I would. Love to come see you swim, though. So can you maybe give us some kind of a little schedule so we can, like, whatever's going on?
Yeah, this Saturday, we have the MCIAC meet at the CF pool at 9:00 AM. I believe it starts.
Mom and Dad, Mom, you're here. Can you stand up? I think we need to recognize you guys. Come on, and Dad. We know those early hours, that you're the ones that got her there, and all your dedication to your daughter, and congratulations. I'm so excited to watch you in the Olympics someday and see you interviewed on the Today Show. Congratulations, and keep up...I'm so proud of your academics because you understand the importance. Your swimming gives you so much discipline, that competitive spirit. So do your academics, so you'll go very, very far in life, so congratulations. We're very proud of you.
And I want to see you interviewed on Fox Inference.
I want to commend you. That's all. To do what you're doing is extremely disciplined, to be able to get up in the morning and do those practices and then go back in the evening, but also to go to school all day and then to maintain such a high GPA. I think sometimes we put the athletic ability over the scholarly ability, but you have both. So we're celebrating both, and we encourage you to go fur- far, and I look forward to you making it the Olympic team, and then I'll be cheering for you. And again, go Wildcat. And all right, Jody. Make us proud.
I echo their sentiments, too, and I look forward to seeing you on all channels. You'll be the Ocala homegirl. You'll be our sweetheart. But you are just well-rounded, grounded, and your parents did an excellent job because it is a family club, and they stood behind you, beside you, in front of you the whole time, and you're very blessed. So best of luck, and we look forward to watching you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exciting.
I forgot to read our commitment statement. We are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we chose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered, because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic, kind of like Ms. Bauer. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and clarify expectations, and get better. We do not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. Okay, I'm sorry about that, Ms.-
All right, there we go. I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 24, 2019, School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
By Ms. Thrower. Second by Ms. McCall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, like sign. And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 30, 2019 Emergency School Board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. Are there any discussion? Nope? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July 30, 2019 Special School Board Meeting, Public Hearing, and Tentative Budget?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 7, 2019 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. Mr. James Phillips, Program Specialist, Extracurricular Activities and Driver's Education, please come forward and introduce the individual to be recognized for her outstanding accomplishments. Hmm, that being-
Wonder who that is.
...in the sport of swimming.
Yes. A couple of things to add, just to be clear and make sure that Elise does get her fair due. She is quite an outstanding individual, and so, as I mentioned earlier, she's an exceptional student, maintaining a high GPA and a leader on the Forest High Swim team. However, tonight, we also want to recognize her for her participation outside of Forest High School. And so, over the summer, as a member of the Central Florida Marlin Swim Club, Elise participated in the Phillips 66 National Championships. She competed in the 400, 800, and 1500 freestyle events. And if I can interject, we were discussing earlier why she would ever choose to participate in the 1500 is beyond me, but she said that Coach Vargo left no option, that that was what she was told to do. So it is very grueling if you don't know. It takes a tremendous, tremendous effort to participate in that event. So at any rate, she competed in those events, and in the 800 and 1500, she swam her personal best times. These times qualified her for the 2020 Olympic Trials in the 800 and the 1500 events. Through this outstanding performance, also in the 1500 freestyle at the National Championships, Elise recently, very recently, within the last few weeks, earned a spot on the 2019-2020 National Junior Team. She's currently ranked 11th in the country among 18-and-under swimmers in the event, and as a result, will represent Team USA Swimming during the 2019 and '20 season. So it is with great pleasure that I reintroduce to you Ms. Elise Bauer.
How do you do all that and keep a 4.57 GPA?
My coach, I've known him for a very, very long time, he always wanted school first, well, family first, school second, swimming third. School was always above swimming, and family was always above school, and kind of stuck by that throughout my four years of high school, and it's kind of what got me there.
And you're so humble, too, and so soft-spoken. Wow, good for you.
Thank you so much.
You are dynamic, just wonderful.
Inspiration.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mayer, Superintendent, you would like to recognize Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of Public Relations and Multimedia Productions, for his awards and accomplishments in the Public Relations Office.
Yeah, so Mr. Christian, if you'll come on up, he's going to give you some details of some awards that he led the team in winning this past summer, and here comes the team.
And the key word is "team," because that's what this is all about. So I'm going to ask my colleagues from the Elementary Curriculum Department to come forward first. Ladies, don't be shy. Uh-uh, you've got to be over here in camera range. And gentlemen, excuse me. Ms. Beck will lead the way right here, and you guys can come up behind her, so we can get you all on camera, okay? Each year, on behalf of the district, I'm happy and proud to submit various projects to professional public relations organizations that aren't just for public education, but for public relations as an entire industry, meaning public, private, profit, non-for-profit, all of them grouped together. And each year, we are blessed, in my opinion, to receive some kind of recognition for those projects and efforts. So the folks that you see standing beside me and around me at this time are responsible for an Award of Distinction that came from the Florida Public Relations Association, and if you know anything about FPRA, to get anything from FPRA is a tremendous feat. It is very, very difficult. I think this year, there were 250-plus entries, and 104, I think, received some kind of award, so more than half don't get anything. So it's very difficult, and it's very strict. Everything has to be measurable, and as you will learn in your work session tomorrow, will be reminded that it's not an objective unless it's measurable. And everything that public relations, successful projects and campaigns are based on has that strategic, measurable objection within the entire plan. So these folks received the Award of Distinction for our Community Reads website initiative, and you'll recall that that was created as an additional resource for our elementary parents, looking for additional activities and reading suggestions for their students after the normal school day ended. These folks meet on a monthly basis to review every word of every webpage on that site. And of course, you can reach our Community Reads website by going to our homepage, marionsschools.net, and if you'll look for the book, click on that book, that will take you there. We have by grade level, all kinds of resources, fun-filled activity sheets, and family-friendly activities in our community. It's updated each month, so it's fresh and it's new. And you might even see a familiar face or two. Many of you have been featured on that website. We have local celebrities who have joined the effort to encourage our students to read, and of course, many of our principals, APs, and some of the folks behind me have even held a book for the camera as well. So I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves, or Ms. Beck, you can actually introduce them. You know them all.
I do.
Come on up.
All right. Good evening, board members. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Christian, for submitting our project to so many of these awards. Community Reads is a labor of love, and we work hard in our department to make it happen, and we hope that it's a great outreach to our community. So I think you know who I am. I'm Jennifer Beck. I'm the Director of Elementary Education. Joining me, I have my two coordinators. This is Ms. Chris Lyon. She supports grades 3 through 5. Next to her, we have Ms. Sarah Lucas. She supports our kindergarten through second-grade teachers and students. And then we have Ms. Stacy Newman's. She is our ELA Program Specialist. We have Mr. Aaron Martin. He is our Media Program Specialist. We have Dossie Elder. She is our Social Studies Program Specialist. We have Mrs. Jamie Brazington. She supports our L-300 schools and our MTSS project. And we have Ms. Jennifer Leeds, who is our Coordinator of Instructional Materials. Did I get everyone? I did, and thank you so much for having us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me do this.
Let me share. This is the award that we received, so it is proudly displayed in our office, but we'll share it with the superintendent's office and with the elementary curriculum as well. Here, go ahead. I'll come and get it. But their efforts are tremendous each and every month, and we literally look at every page of every website in that project, every letter, to make sure the words are spelled correctly and it makes sense for parents. So my hat is off to these folks, because it's a tremendous effort on their part.
And it is, and actually, when Ms...before Ms. Beck said that you guys worked very hard, I was sitting there thinking, I know most of you guys there, and for many years, and these are some of the most hard-working, dedicated employees Marion County Public Schools has. So thank you so much, and that's just a wonderful compliment to what you guys truly are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Let me also share some other district awards that we received. As I mentioned, that was from the Florida Public Relations Association. We also submit to NSPR, which is the National School Public Relations Association. I was fortunate enough to attend that conference this year in DC, and let me just say, if I haven't told you, never go to DC in July. There's nothing fun about it. We were fortunate to win this, I'm really proud of. This is actually also for Community Reads. This is a Golden Achievement Award. This is the second-highest award given by NSPR. The only bigger award is the Medallion Award, and there's only eight to 10 of those handed out each year nationwide. But even to get this, it's a lot of work, and again, kudos to the team that you just saw up-
Kevin, I think you're on your way to getting a medallion soon.
I'm sorry?
I think you're on your way to getting a medallion. If anybody in the country can get it, you can get it.
It's a goal. It's a goal of mine.
You can get it. Bring it on for us.
A gold medallion from NSPR and a big pyramid from FPRA. That would be wonderful. We also were honored for the superintendent's graduation speech, which the superintendent shared at this year's graduations that many of you were at. And so this is a writing award, so we're happy to have that. That's an Award of Merit. We also received an Award of Merit for our Golden Apple Teacher of the Year speech, which you were there for that as well. I would ask Dr. Mayer to stand up and demonstrate, but I won't do that, because there's a song involved. And then we also received two other awards. Honorable mentions for our Class Acts, which is a column that I write each month for Ocala Style Magazine that showcases the unsung accomplishments, in many cases, of our students and teachers who typically wouldn't necessarily receive media attention, but it's a great way to showcase them. And I'm telling you, more people read that column than I could ever have believed. And Ocala has been...Ocala Style has been generous since 2001. We have had a column in every month's issue through several editors and now through several publishers without paying a penny.
Wow, that's good.
That page is $2,000 to $3,000 a month, so you can add up those costs. So again, that's for Class Acts. And then our final award is for the school calendar that we produce each year, that comes out of my office, and we produce 54,000 of those, and I think right now, of the current year's calendar, we have about 250 left. So if you need extras, let me know, because once they're gone, they're gone. We don't reprint. It's too expensive. But it is posted online, but that honorable mention is for our calendar as well. So, you know, my name may be on these awards and on the certificate, but it truly is a team effort, and everybody, from the folks that you saw up here, to people that you may never encounter, to the folks right behind that wall who put you guys live on the internet every Tuesday or every schoolboard meeting and every work session. Everybody plays a part of the team, and that's what it's about, is doing things together, succeeding together, because that makes it all worthwhile. So I appreciate your recognition.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Yes.
I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item number six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's rules.
Thank you. Ms. Martina Lopez, how many speakers do we have this evening?
Nine.
We have nine speakers. Okay, board, we have nine speakers. If we have more than five, we can have a consensus to have it for three minutes, or we could just go ahead with five. I don't know what you guys would like to do this evening.
I say let's go with five, and if they get done before five minutes, then we'll get done earlier.
Okay. For the board members, we could-
Came all the way here.
Gary Hackman.
You first.
Thank you for this time. My talk is going to be on the Florida HOPE Scholarship, and I'll just read this to you. At the Florida Citizens Alliance, we want every public school family to take HOPE back to school this fall. Sadly, bullying happens in every...in every instance of bullying matters. It matters to the family of the student, it matters to us, and thankfully, it matters to the state of Florida. There were close to 50,000 official cases of bullying reports last year. I know personally how bullying can affect a child. Our granddaughter was bullied through tears and emotional stress. Thankfully, it was handled by the school. Florida law, FS 1002.40, recognizes that no student should suffer from bullying. Get help for your student by immediately reporting it to the principal. Remember, any instance of bullying, robbery, sexual assault, threat or intimidation, fighting at school, riding on a school bus, or waiting for the school bus, this should be reported right away. At this time, I am submitting into the record a copy of the FS 1002.40, as well as a public school chancellor's Jacob Oliver's March 1, 2019, letter sent to every superintendent. Other examples of intimidation of bullying could include elementary or middle school being forced to learn about the LGBTQT culture, a high school student being forced to learn about democratic socialism. Once the parent or guardian reports the incident, it becomes the school's district to responsibly to solve the problem to the student's satisfaction. The school district needs to come up with a solution that satisfies the student's concerns. At the same time, the school must notify the parents or guardians of the HOPE scholarship options, transportation to move the student to another public school, or a scholarship to a private school. Then a parent or guardian decides what is best for the student. The solution the school district supplies or a HOPE scholarship. The school will likely investigate the incident, but the student's eligibility for the HOPE scholarship is absolute and does not depend on the outcome of any investigation. That makes it very clear that the student is eligible for the HOPE scholarship simply by reporting the incident. Please note that the law does not require substantiation in order for the district to notify the parent of the program, and any district that is adding this requirement is in- And any district that is adding this requirement is in violation of a stat, static, statute, statute and administrative rule, and will be dealt with according to the law. So, parents and students, use this program to protect yourself and your students. Take HOPE back to schools, no bullies allowed. That's it. And I have these, who did I give these to?
Attorney.
Mr. Hackman, can you please state your name and address? Please, thank you, sir.
My name is Gary Hackman. Last name is H-A-C-K-M-A-N. I live on top of the world at 9800 Southwest 85th Terrace Road.
Thank you, sir.
Okey dokey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bradley Die.
Can you please hand it to the, Mr. Gibbs? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bradley Die, and that's spelled D-Y-E. I work for a company called Advanced Green Energy in Inverness, Florida, one of your neighbors. Board, I thank you to be in your midst, hearing things of excellence, as well as things that are measurable, and that's why I'm here today. We recently performed a test that resulted in an order, and I'm looking for guidance as to where to go. We specifically targeted school bus efficiency, and in that has to do with fuel cost. We were able, in Hernando County, in a, in a test, the, to create $50,000 savings. Now, if I extrapolate that from the size of Hernando County to Marion County, that's someplace between $150,000 and $200,000 annually. I know that everyone has their favorite projects, along with needing staff, et cetera. There's only a couple ways to get that money. You raise the millage, or you find a way to save money. I am presenting something for a cost savings measure. What I am needing is to know how to navigate in your, in your system efficiently, because that $150,000 to $200,000 is important to you. We really earmarked school buses because they're one of the most inefficient fuel vehicles that are on the road, and it's because they stop and go so many times. About the only thing that I can put them in a comparison to would be a trash truck, because of starting, stopping, starting, stopping. While buses today in Florida are not regulated with emissions standards like other vehicles, it's a pretty good safe assumption that they will in the future. Our products actually reduce NOx, carbon monoxide, and carbon dioxide, at the same time increasing fuel efficiency to the point of those savings, and that's after the cost of our product. So, again, I'm looking for some guidance where to go, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Mayor, I wonder, can you have Mr. Lepert reach out to him? Mr. Lepert?
Sure. Is your contact information in the packet you gave Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Ziegler.
Paul Ziegler, Z-E-I-G-L-E-R, 9571 Southwest, 102 Place, Ocala, 344-81. Several centuries ago, we had prayer in school, Bible in school, and other good things, and lawyers and judges decided it would be terrific to remove those things and remove God, and ever since then, we've had those replaced with killings in school, drugs in school, and other things like that. So, we're just here to ask you to reinstate prayer in school, because the bottom line is, would you rather have killing in school or prayer in school?
Louis Cox.
Louis Cox, L-O-U-I-S-C-O-X, 1324 Southeast 33rd Court, Ocala, Florida, 344-71. This is the first time I've been recorded since I was a school teacher at GHS back in the early 70s, so I'll try to make a better performance than I did then. First of all, I want to thank for allowing us to be here, and regardless of what we say and what we present, this is not an assault on this board. These are our heartfelt feelings about the loss of the rights of our student citizens that have been taken away by a minority of people who appealed to the judges and the courts, because they were offended by the fact that people were praying to a loving As I said, I think I said, our students are citizens also, and they're being denied their constitutional rights. It's interesting around this county, where I've been here since 77, I see emblems on our county vehicles, police cars, even here says, "In God We Trust." It takes faith to trust in God, and certainly, that's not something we should be happy with depriving our students of. I understand that students are allowed to gather at a flagpole and pray. I assume that's before the bell rings, but they're not allowed, and that's on school property, but they're not allowed to pray in the school, in the building, or in their classroom. Sort of defies logic to me, that you can be on the same piece of property and pray in one spot, but not in another. That kind of bothers me just, just a bit, and I wonder, is there a court order that allows them to pray at the flagpole? I know that someone has, has determined that it's against the court rulings to allow them to pray in the classroom, but I wonder, that, that might be clarified to us at some Sometimes, resistance is in order to offset the trial and error proceedings of courts and protesters. I, I don't want to see our country come to a, a violent protest situation to try to get the rights back for our children to pray in the schools. Someone mentioned shootings. I was going to refer to them as tragedies in our schools, which we've all seen and heard and experienced. And I can assure you, when the shots start ringing out, there are teachers and principals that say, "Oh, my God, help us." That's a pretty cheap, cheap shot at God, if you ask me. It's sort of like having a neighbor who's been there for a while, and you never talk to them, you never wave, wave to them, you never interact, and then you need some help. You say, "Charlie, can you come over here and help me dig some fence post?" Can you really expect to get any help? The last thing in closing, I would request that maybe the attorney, your attorney, could try to be apprised of any positive court decisions around our country that give us hope that we might push to restore prayer in our schools here in this county. There are a lot of actions. In regard to resistance, I saw a video just a couple of days ago of some students at a football game in Alabama. They were told not to pray. They stood up and defied it, and they prayed, and I admire those students. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Cox, I, I just want you to know that student-led prayer is protected, encouraged, allowed. I personally celebrate it. I know we also have many of our football teams who will huddle before a game and say a prayer, and that is also protected and celebrated.
And where is it protected?
By law. In fact, I have to s-
Where in the class, where on the school property is it protected?
Well, they, sir, a, a student can pray anywhere they want.
Out loud?
Well, that would go to where they can't disrupt instructions, like if a teacher's teaching, they can't just, you know, but they, they, awesome, it is, yes.
I understand. It seems that since when bad things happen, we call on God, it seems like that a few moments could, could be given in the classroom for students to volunteer to pray, or to join together and pray the Lord's Prayer, to be an inspiration to those that maybe have never heard of prayer, to help others develop a little bit of faith, and to, to let God know that he's appreciated, and when we need his help, maybe he will decide to give it to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Glenn Fiorello.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Glenn Fiorello, F-I-O-R-E-L-L-O, 838 Southeast 3rd Street, Ocala, Florida. As a common courtesy of the prayer committee, which I'm a member of, met with each and every one of you to discuss ahead of time what we're going to bring before you here tonight. I'm asking for a board member to be, to be a liaison with our committee, to meet with us, see what we can do to bring back prayer to the schools in conjunction with the pledge, start the class every day with a prayer, and then the pledge of allegiance, as it was in the past. And it, it's a tough call, believe me, I understand that. If it wasn't, I wouldn't be here at this podium. It'd be a slam dunk, and we'd be done with it, but it isn't, and I respect each and every one of you for the time you gave us and for listening to us and allowing us to be here One thing that's very important to take into consideration is all laws discriminate, if you think about it. Every law that's on the books counts, and I'm sure they discriminate one way or another. I want to do this, no, you can't, you've got to do that. So, if you take that, that mindset, that, that might help us get over this hurdle that you discriminate against someone, because they might not want to hear a prayer from a, about a loving God. That's what we're looking to accomplish here. Currently, students, as we discussed earlier, are allowed to pray at a flagpole, and to me, that, that's, that's almost like a second-class treatment to someone that wants to worship a loving God, that you've got to go to a flagpole, or under a tree, whatever the case may be, that it can't be in a classroom, especially for the students who've never heard the Lord's name before, don't know anything about our God, a loving God, and that's where I'm going with this. I'm not asking for a moment of silence in a classroom, but a prayer, like I said, to a loving God. Now, I'm going to go regress 30 years back when my hair was the color of the counselors over there, okay? I was in a county commission meeting, and we always start our meetings with a moment of silence and then a pledge. This is in the county commission meetings right here in Marion County. And my pastor was in the commission meeting, and he came up to me and he asked me, "What were you doing during that moment of silence?" And I'm not going to lie to him, and I'm not going to lie to anybody, and I looked my father, my father, pastor right in the eye, and I said, "I was doing my grocery list. I wasn't praying, because it was a moment of silence. There was nothing there to keep my attention on what I was supposed to be doing." That's why I think the verbal part of the prayer is so important, and not just the moment of silence. Well, he asked me, he said, "What's your thoughts on prayer?" And I said, "Ain't going to happen," because I knew it was a tough hurdle, so I'm looking each and every one of you in the eye to say, "I understand what you're up against." And I was driving home that night, and I thought, "You know what? Something made my pastor show up at my, at the meeting. Something made him come up to me. It's up to me now to take the ball and run with it." And it was a little tough hurdle, and if you go to a board or county commission meetings today, guess what they do before they start their meetings? They pray. That was over 30 years ago. So, I'm asking you now, maybe I should have been here 30 years sooner, but see what we can do to make something like this become a reality here in Marion County. That being said, I'm asking, as I said earlier, for a board member, someone that's a believer, and I know I believe all of you are, everyone in this room that I'm looking at and speaking to is, is a believer, to be liaison to work with us, to realize there's got to be a way that we can make this happen. And that's what I'm asking for tonight. If one of you would like to be liaison to work with us for our prayer committee, and then you can report back to the board. Here's what's taking place. If one of you has an objection, another, but if you change this, we can make it work. That's our purpose, is to help you, enable you, if you so desire, to cross that road so we can have a prayer with all of our students from a loving God before the, the start of every class day in the classrooms.
Okay, I'm going to ask that-
You don't have to ask, I'll, I'll volunteer.
Yeah, he-
Thank you, Eric.
So, the liaison will be-
Pastor, we appreciate it.
-pastor Cummings.
We'll have some candid discussions.
I hope so. I'm looking forward to it, and I thank each and every one of you for your time and meeting with us. For some of our members, this was the first time they've ever come before a podium, and I'm very proud of them, and I look forward to working with you, Reverend. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vernon Uhlinger.
Dr. Mayor and board members, my name is Vern Uhlinger, U-H-L-I-N-G-E-R, and I live in Majestic Oaks, 544-8-Southwest-88th Place, and I'm here with the prayer group also. I, I am here, here to recommend the board vote to put prayer back into the school each We are a Judeo-Christian nation, and there's no reason that it can't be put back in there. When, when I was going to school, we used to have prayer on the loudspeaker through the various classrooms and, which I think was very effective, and we did the pledge allegiance and that, but I pretty much, I agree pretty much with the rest of the things that have been discussed all, already, and so, and I hope that we can work together and try to get this taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Howard.
My name is Mary Howard, H-O-W-A-R-D. My address is P.O. Box, Silver Springs, Florida, 344-89. I come before you, I came before you on August 27, 2019, about a grave injustice that was done to several of my colleagues and I of Evergreen Elementary School. I want to state, as I did then, I do not want any retaliation or future retributions brought against me for speaking our truths. Today, I'm standing here because I brought questions before you that have not been answered. Is it protocol to have officers with guns and the school board district administrators to escort valuable employees who were being transferred, not terminated, off campus like common criminals? Is it protocol to tell valuable employees they are not wanted there, and they need to gather their personal belongings and leave the premises immediately? Is it protocol not to allow a valuable employee to get his or her child who attends that school, but to have an armed officer get that child and have both child and employee escorted off campus by officers? off campus by officers? Also, we were told by the deputy superintendent that our salary and pay would not change. Why are we not receiving what we were promised? I came before you a couple of days shy of a month with most of these questions. You, the board, asked for a full report, but nothing was addressed or discussed at the last school board meeting. So I'm standing here before you today, September 24, 2019, asking, has there been a report concerning this incident? When will it become public? If the report isn't complete, when can we expect it to be completed? We did not deserve this grave injustice that was done to us. We're not common criminals. We are valuable employees of the Marion County school system who deserve answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark Avery?
My name's Mark Avery. My last name is A-V-E-R-Y. I reside at 3 Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, 347-34472, and I'm the president of the Marion Education Association, which represents the instructional employees of Marion County, close to 3,000 teachers. Again, I am here to talk to you about professional treatment of the instructional staff. I know that the next board meeting, you're going to discuss the calendar and some changes that were presented to you at the work session last week. Did we change a sign outside to say Marion County Breakfast Shack? Does the sign instead say Marion County Extended Day Hotel? Because the district is scheduling the instructional employees like their hospitality staff. First, there was the week of the hurricane. No school all week, only 12-month employees need to report. But on Wednesday, the teachers and all instructional personnel were told that they need to, schools will be open Thursday, and you need to be here, without regard if their families were in the, if the families of the students or if the families of our employees, if they had other plans. We expect you're here, and if you're not able, then you must take your own personal time. Later that same morning, there was a meeting with the district and the IU PAT bargaining unit and the MEASP bargaining unit on how to make up the mistakes. After they came up with a plan, someone in the meeting decided that MEA should be included, so I was called and added on speaker. Again, they'd already decided on the plan, no other options were given. When I had an opportunity to share this plan with the teachers, they were livid. Why approve a calendar and then not follow it? The calendar currently has hurricane days in there. They may not be the best solution, but this board approved it. All the units had opportunity to come and speak about it when it was on the agenda, and they chose not to. So this plan works, this suggested changes, this works for the hourly employees, but does not benefit the teachers. Does it benefit the families and the children of Marion County's schools? I don't know. We reinforce the importance of prompt, regular attendance for our students and our employees, yet for those that are diligent and try to follow the calendar and plan their trips and things around those, they can no longer trust what the district approves and publishes to the public. What about the families and employees who already made plans? There was not any discussion about them. Will these changes, will these proposed changes, will the students have excused absences? What about the instructional personnel that already have plans? Again, they will be expected to use personal days that must be approved by their administration ahead of time and can be denied. It should be pointed out that the teachers would not only have to work the first scheduled day of winter break, but they would also have to work one of the hurricane makeup days in June. None of the other hourly employees will have to work that day in June, only instructional employees. Unfortunately, this proposed solution has put a wedge between the different bargaining units, and that's not beneficial to the 6,000 employees of Marion County Public Schools. Hospitality and restaurant employees are frequently called into work because that is the nature of the industry. However, the instructional employees are not employed by you in this, in those occupations. We ask that you treat them like the professionals and with respect, and keep the currently approved calendar that has hurricane makeup days. Let's learn from this and improve next year's calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Thank you.
Gary White, Mr. Gary White?
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay. That's it?
All right. We have a motion to approve consent agenda item C. 7.1-C18.3.
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall. Seconded by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed unanimously. Ma'am, a motion to remove the, from the table, the motion submitted at the August 27, 2019, school board meeting, D. 2.1.1, revised job descriptions, titles for director of safety and security, coordinator of safe schools, school security specialist, and investigator. We're just moving it from the table. Moved by Ms. McCall. Seconded by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the motion passed unanimously. The motion now on the floor is to vote on item D. 2.1.1, revised job descriptions, titles for director of safety and security, coordinator of safe schools, school security specialist, and investigator. We had a very detailed discussion last week, and I believe we all agreed that we would not be moving the job titles, so do we have any further discussion on that or no? No? Okay. So, we're going to vote no. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, light sign, nay.
Nay.
Okay. And the motion did not pass unanimously. We have a motion to approve emergency purchase requests, removal and excluding of bats from buildings at Bellevue High School.
So?
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. I don't, do we need an update or do you guys, you do want an update? Okay.
This is costing a little bit more than we thought.
Right. It was in the paper this morning.
Dr. Grantham will make his way in. I just, I just have a couple of questions.
Okay, good.
And I, I had asked a question a few weeks ago, were there any health risks with this situation too?
I don't have Dr. Grantham, but I have the bat specialist.
Okay.
Got Batman?
Batman. Batman.
I don't know if I qualify as a bat specialist, but the situation, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, by the way, Dr. Mayor, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, Mr. Gibbs. The purpose of this emergency item is, we've had bat issues on and off at Bellevue High School for almost 20 years, which I actually just discovered recently, that it'd been going on that long. And the way Bellevue High School is designed and built, there are many, many, many crevices and areas, not only for bats, but for other rodents or insects to climb into. And of course, in time, as the building gets older, excuse me, some of the ceiling and some of the joints fail and need to be replaced. Originally, the pest control company came in, gave the environmental services a price through the bidding or the quoting process to exclude bats. When you exclude bats, you essentially put up a net wherever they're coming in so they can get out, but can't get back in. And after several weeks of doing that, you can permanently seal that. The issue there is that they simply moved to the next building, and the next building, and the next building. In addition, they're finding cracks and crevices in the superstructure of all the covered walkways, which are all concrete, and most of our schools are aluminum, areas that we would never have thought that a bat would live. So the additional 18,000 is to cover the non-building-related cracks and crevices and all the covered walkways and things in there. Short of, you know, an eighth of a mile worth of covered walkway is both floors at that school. If you can envision, all the columns are concrete, all the beams are concrete, all the decking is concrete, and where those elements meet and match up are where they have migrated to. So the long-range plan is, this will take care of sealing, at least on a five-to-seven-year basis, all the cracks, crevices, and areas where they're coming in at. We're going to install bat houses. We actually had bat houses at the school some years ago, they were knocked over in a storm. And this will provide the colony, which lives in that area already due to some of the cavernous activities, a place to go, which is much more suitable for them way away from the buildings so that they do not return. And in the interim, once we have all these places sealed, we will be going back behind and correcting some of the design flaws when the school was built. The gutters actually hide wood and two-inch gaps at every building in that campus, and the foam will last so long, we'll be installing flashing underneath. It will not be done by this company. This company's mission is to, A, exclude them, B, seal the areas they're coming in, and then we're going to treat those areas with a fog element that will prevent any sort of odors from coming back in time. You can remove the bats, but you just can't find every spot they came in, and this will help seal that up. So this $18,000 purchase order is coming before the board because net, when you combine the previous purchase order and this one, it puts it just over the $50,000 threshold, and in order to do that, we would need board approval. So again, to summarize, this would allow that company to complete its sealing and exclusion operations. We'll have the bat houses installed in the month of October. It's sort of ironic that it happens to be Halloween, but it just so happened that timed out that way, and that we will be coming back at a later date to reflash every building in the school to permanently seal, not only from bats, but also weather, which is another concern. There's actually water from time to time that gets into the wall cavity. So that's essentially the update, yes.
I have a question. The bat guano, are they able to get rid of that, and is that a health issue if they can't get rid of it?
It, if long-term exposure to that on a daily basis, there is a fungus that grows in bat guano that does produce the smell, that's where you get most of the odors from, and it can be a respiratory ailment or cause respiratory issues. That's what the fogging operation will take care of. We have our own pest control folks that have the ability to do that, so we're waiting for that two-week period to end, ensure the bats are out. We'll have to shut off the fire alarm systems and what have you and fog so that we can get those vapors into the cracks and crevices. I suspect one of the issues in the past is, we treated what we could see, but there's many areas you just can't see. It's 20 feet down a wall in a space that's no wider than 3/4 of an inch, and this gassing will take care of those, any lingering odors and anything we cannot get to. It neutralizes, has an enzyme in it that will neutralize the guano.
So the guano's still going to be there?
What's that?
It'll still be there.
It'll probably always be there, but it will be inactive. It basically breaks it down.
I've never heard of that ever becoming inactive. If it's start off as that, it's always-
Well, what happens is, if you introduce humidity or moisture to bat guano, it reactivates the fungus that tends to grow in it, and that's where the odors come from. And I suspect when you, because I've done a lot of research myself, in addition to our folks and the experts we contract with, and most people that have bats in erratic, when they get rid of the bats, they still smell it periodically. It's because of the humidity levels. When in Florida, you're never going to get rid of the humidity level. So fogging with a particular enzyme that you can buy from our vendors that sell our folks, the chemicals that we use to treat pests, will neutralize the fungus. And since we're be permanently sealing, in the past, it was always do something quick, foam it, fill the gaps. In time, those gaps reappear because stuff falls out and the buildings settle. And what should have happened is, when the school got built, it should have been a metal flashing all the way around the building. It was never done, I'm not sure why. We will be coming back to fix that issue and remove all the gutters once the bats are completely out of the building. And they may be now, but we have to wait a two-week period once the nets are up to ensure they don't come back, because they don't leave the building every night.
The second thing is, they, we started in one building, then they moved to another building, they moved to another building. How do we know they're not just going to move down the street to the middle school?
Well, that's a thought that's already occurred in-
Then that's the case, then we need to be trying to prevent that before we start messing with them where they are now, wouldn't we?
That's part of what we're doing now, is trying to examine where they might or might not come in there. The high school is built so differently than the middle school. It was built after the middle school. My understanding is they ran out of money, and apparently they ran out of money to put flashing up. But the other hope is that they'll occupy the bat houses and give them a place to go because they'll simply occupy a storm drain next or somebody's barn. They've been there, like I'm told, over 20 years in that area. And so obviously, there's plenty of area for them to live and breed, even probably before the school was built.
Have we worked with the university?
Due to technical difficulties, we had to recess, but we are reconvening at 6:42 PM with Mr. Robert Knight, and we are discussing bats.
Yes. Just to recap anything that might have been said before the break or even missed, we've had a bat, on and off bat issue at Bellevue High School for the better part of 20 years, and whenever a bat issue was discovered, there were temporary measures put into place that would last three to five years, and then we would maybe have a recurrence all over again. So currently, where we stand with the issue is that we've ordered some bat houses to be erected at the school to give them a place to go permanently outside of our buildings. Second, we've already begun the process under a previous purchase order of encapsulating all of the roof eaves where they were coming in at the buildings, but there is additional work needed authorized by the board to also seal off cracks and crevices, more so really crevices, at all the covered walkways and some of the areas that are not at the building roof eve. That will keep the bats out. Hopefully, they'll go to the bat houses, and then we will be coming back after the fact and fogging all the cavities to reduce and eliminate with an enzyme-based product any odors that may linger. And then finally, we will be coming back to flash behind the gutters to permanently seal the gaps all around the campus because of the way the school was designed and built originally. And so today, it was action requested of the board to approve a purchase order to complete the exclusion of the bats from other areas other than the buildings, and then we, as needed, will come back to the board in the future for any final action on a permanent fix. This will, but this will give us a chance to seal the gaps and things that they're, where they're coming in now, and exclude them so that they can get out, not get back in, and afford us time to get the bat houses up.
And do they, in your research and in talking to UF, will the bats use the bat houses rather than going to other facilities?
Yeah, I asked about that and asked, well, what's the timing? Because sometimes if you build something and it smells too new, just like a new car smell, they may or may not like it. And they said, well, the particular company building or the non-for-profit organization that's building our bat houses has a record of occupancy within 12 hours of erection. So they've no doubt done this many, many times, know the types of wood, know exactly how to build it. I was a student up there in graduate school when they had their bat issue at the tennis stadium, and one of the things they learned is that they did overkill. You know, they, well, bats are like people, they probably want a nice place, let's do this, let's do that, and it simply wasn't suitable, and they didn't like it. And they all flew off until years later, when it had aged a bit, and they began to occupy it because there were cracks and crevices to crawl in. They do not like to go through large, large openings. They rather fit into tight spaces to regulate their body temperature. And one of the things the university had done is created a living room for them, and they simply didn't like the space.
Interesting.
Yes.
Not even the snobby ones.
Apparently not. They simply, I guess they-
I don't think there's any such-
Live like the commoners.
I don't know. They like to live all together.
I think you've eased our minds a little bit more. Thank you.
I have two quick questions. The original bat houses, were they well utilized before they blew over?
My understanding is yes. I believe they only held 800 to 1,000 bats total, and they were built in-house in our maintenance shop, and I don't know if the pole broke or something, it happened during a previous storm some years ago, and they simply weren't replaced. And so it's possible that they found a storm drain or something else to live in, and as water tables rise, caves fill up, storm drains fill up. Our school was evidently very inviting, and they took up roost there till a point where eventually somebody saw several or smelled them, and that's what triggered the request for help, and we went out there and have been going out there ever since, about a month or so.
And are these new-fangled bat houses up to hurricane code?
They will be. I believe they're installed in a steel pole, so there's less chance- I believe they're installed in a steel pole, so there's less chance of poles rotting. And the company that makes them is in central Florida, closer to the coast. And apparently, their houses are all over the place. I don't know if they're wind-rated, but...
Hundred miles an hour.
Yeah. Yeah. Hurricane shelter bats, but perhaps we can add them to the pet shelter. I don't know.
Are there...
Well, you know, you don't want them to blow over and then...
With these new buildings that they moved to, what's the... Is it around the students? What's...
Yeah. They... We believe they've taken it where they took up roost is between the gutter and the wall. Every building has two sides of it that have gutters. The other sides are gabled, meaning they're simply straight up, they're pitched, and there are gaps in between the metal and the building itself. Behind the gutter is a two-inch gap, and between the brick and the block is about a three-quarter inch space, which is exactly the space requirements they like. And so if they haven't been in the student areas, except if you leave a door open at night, you do run the risk of one flying in chasing an insect, and then they're trapped in the room if somebody shuts the door behind them. So they were actually living at the edge of the roof line, probably not to be noticed except there's a weird smell. And then, of course, the custodians and the folks coming in early are going to see them because that's when they take off or come back to their roosting point. And that's where they were discovered, when they were flying en masse to roof eaves, and several doors were open, and one or two actually got in the room before they found their way out. Students don't seem to be bothered, but... Because we've been there a few times where we've seen them, and they're kind of, eh, it's a bat. Maybe the novelty has worn off by then, so...
I understand that, but I've had several parents that kind of were concerned about, you know, bats carry rabies and stuff.
Yes.
So I've had some parents that have reached out to me concerning that, their student safety.
Yeah, I've actually, in checking with Florida Wildlife and some of the other folks, they actually said there's a greater chance of contracting rabies through a rabid dog or raccoon than there is a bat, simply because they don't tend to live right where you live. They live in spaces you never really occupy or see. And of course, they're out at night when most people are not around, and if they get that rabid, they infect the colony, colony dies, and off you go. So to date, we've not had anybody chased or anything of the sort. And we've only... We're only getting reports of maybe a dozen bats ever seen anymore, where there were hundreds when we first heard about the issue, where they were all coming back to the roof eve. And evidently, they found some temporary places to roost, and the hope is that if they occupy the bat houses, excuse me, or somewhere else, then our building will be far less appealing.
Okay. And then the other thing was kids that may have possibly have asthma or breathing problems. Parents were concerned about the respiratory type thing.
Yeah, we've closed off, when we first were alerted to the problem, we closed off the fresh air intakes on the buildings, so that there is no chance of pulling anything in from an area like a crack or a crevice that might leak into the building. The second thing we've done is changed the filters to a high-grade filter. I have these in my house. They're Asmatic-style filters. They trap odors, they trap pollen, they trap pet dander, more so than typical particulates. And then the third phase is when we do the fogging operation, of course, nobody can be in the building when it occurs, so we'll probably do it on a weekend or at night. It has a 24-hour effective rate. So if you're still smelling it beyond 24 hours, you simply treat again, meaning that you didn't put enough fog into the spaces. And so we're probably going to make three passes, whether we need it or not, just to ensure that the building is super pressurized and it gets everywhere it needs to be.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Okay. So, right now, we have a motion to vote on the emergency purchase for removing and excluding the bats from the building. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $29,166.27. Backpacks valued at $12,637.80 to College Park Elementary School, Fort McCoy School, Legacy Elementary School, Marion Oaks Elementary School, Osceola Middle School, Romeo Elementary School, South Ocala Elementary School, and Spar Elementary School, from the Marion County Veterans Council, Inc. $1,500 to Denellin Elementary School from Walmart. Backpacks valued at $1,096 to Evergreen Elementary School from Living Waters Worship Center. $2,500 to Maplewood Elementary School from their business partner, Church at the Springs, via Public Education Foundation. $8,000 to Osceola Middle School from Monroe Regional Health Systems, Inc. $2,000 to Stanton Wearsdale Elementary School from Michael Whitaker and Associates, LLC. Desk chair valued at $1,432.47 to Westport High School from Rebecca Feldman. So...
So...
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thorer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. Mr. Cummings, would you like to thank?
We...
People for our donations.
Always. We are pleased to have so many individuals in the community that are willing to assist our schools with anything that we're needing. And these donations to our schools are needed. We thank each of them for what they've given to these schools respectively. So again, thank you, and we look forward to other contributions as well.
Thank you. The next special administrative briefing and special work session is scheduled for Wednesday, September 25th. That's tomorrow at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss strategic plan goals. The following regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, October 3rd, 2019, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss long-range planning, budget review, employee review, community school, St. Leo presentation, overview of Baker Act procedures, ESC 504 Student Discipline, and Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool District and School Base Presentation. Okay. So now we are going to move with our committee, reports and concerns. And Dr. Mayor, we'll begin with you.
Thank you. Officer Jarvis, thanks for joining us tonight. And you are one of our awesome SROs, and you were at Howard, and now you're at Osceola. Yes. Well, thank you for everything you do every day for our kids, and we appreciate you so much. So thanks for being here tonight. And I've... Ms. Boston Ellis, would you come on up? This came in too late to get it on the board for tonight, but we want to recognize Ms. Boston Ellis and her team. Because for the 19th consecutive year, the Finance Department in Marion County Public Schools has received national recognition for accountability and transparency. So the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, I got it right? Okay. Was awarded to Ms. Boston Ellis and her team by the Government Finance Officers Association. And this is the highest recognition possible in the area of government accounting, 19 years straight. So kudos to you and everybody.
Thank you, and good evening. I just want to say it's not just me. As Kevin mentioned earlier, it is definitely a team, and it goes all the way down to the classrooms and the teachers and the principals, everyone that buys things, that procures items, they have to follow the rules. And then ultimately, the staff led by Alice Posada, who actually put together our financial statements. And I am very proud of them, and I'm very proud to say that I work with them, and it would not happen without your support as board members, as well as our administration. And thank you for that recognition.
Thank you.
Incredibly well deserved.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. We know that we got a jewel in Marion County in our financial...
We sure do. We sure do.
A reminder to everybody that tomorrow is an early release day for our schools. And then finally, I wanted to clarify and ask you all. When we had the work session and we were talking about the calendar, and there was some discussion, and we came up with a plan, and I went back and listened to the audio, and wasn't real clear on if there was a consensus to move forward or not. And before I ask Mr. Christian to put out a press release, so we notify everybody, I wanted to make sure that that's what y'all wanted to do. And it was, what we had talked about was using the October 15th PD Day as a full instructional day, taking the December 11th half-day, making it a full day. And then the December 20th day, when there was no school, making it a half-day. And, you know, I understand you can't vote or anything tonight, but I mean, if there's any doubts, we won't put out the press release and we'll come back. Otherwise, we've got to let families and folks know, so... I think that was our consensus.
Right. I was like, you presented, or Dr. Grantham presented, the plan, and there was a consensus for the board. So I don't understand what was unclear about that, other than you guys needed to speak with the MEA, which we did hear from this evening, and then it was going to come before us to vote. That was my understanding, was that...
Yeah, I thought it was... I thought we had a consensus.
But I understand Dr. Mayor's concern, because I hear what she's saying too, as I'm sitting here listening and hearing the MEA come tonight. Yes, we gave consensus, but then to listen to the MEA. So we've listened to the MEA. Do we have anything that we want to change now, after listening to them, that we would not be willing to vote for if it came before the board? That's what I want to know. Because I can see where she's... Am I...
We didn't have a consensus that day.
No, I said I couldn't hear on the audio if there was a consensus, so I wanted to make sure before we put out the press release that we were good on it.
Do we have a consensus, or are we still waiting to hear from MEA?
I think we have a consensus. And one of the things that concerns me is, you know, we need to do this now, because hurricane season's not over. There's still a lot of storms brewing out there, so we can't be certainly sure that we're not going to have other make-up days. And I think, in my opinion, this is the best. There is no... There's no perfect solution to this. And will there be some inconveniences? Yes. But in my opinion, I think those are the best days for us to move forward with.
Okay. I'm fine.
The only thing I did hear this evening, which I hope would not happen, Mr. Avery did discuss that principals could deny, like if there is an employee that has scheduled time off or they already made plans...
Already made...
Under no circumstances should any employee be denied on those days, because that's...
And it should be excused absences for students, too.
And...
Right. If plans have been made. If plans have been made. You know, this Hurricane Dorian was a ridiculous, confusing mess of a hurricane from the beginning that made it impossible to plan further than 24 hours in advance. And I feel like when we start looking at next year's calendar, we add the hurricane days to the end of the school year. But then, nobody wants to work those days, and testing is over, so people are burned out. At least, that's what I hear.
And parapros need to be paid.
Parapros need to be paid, right? But we don't want to pit unions against each other. But we were up against a lot with this particular storm. Just ask the Bahamas. You know, nobody down there expected that storm to take a nap for almost 40 hours. And we were in there at the Emergency Operations Center, watching the track of this storm, which really wasn't a trek. It was like something on an Etch-A-Sketch. It would go this way, this way, this way, this way. It was ridiculous to try to plan for. So in the future, if we feel like having the hurricane days tacked on at the end of the year is not the best plan, then we need to look at revising it and then stick to it. I believe that's what I'm hearing, is whatever is in the calendar, that's what people try to plan around. But please, public, recognize that Dorian was an act of God. It was a ridiculous storm, and we all have to give a little here, as best that we can, and then plan as well as we can going forward. I've never been a fan of half-days. In fact, it was something that I intended to advocate strongly about reconsidering in next year's calendar. But with these storms becoming more frequent, it is kind of convenient to use the half-days for hurricane make-up days. So we have a lot to discuss, but we do have to make a decision on this one now, and your point, well taken. There's three storms out there right now. Who is it? Jerry and...
Karen.
Karen and one other? So Lorenzo.
Lorenzo.
So the triplets are out there.
So I believe I hear a consensus with what was presented to us last week. And in the future, this board, we need to do our due diligence and probably work them in earlier in the year, should it happen, rather than tack them to the end and then cause frustration. So we will be... We recognize that and move forward.
And I do agree, as Mr. Avery stated, that they were called, MEA was called to the table late. Am I... Did I hear that correct? And that it came as a...
Mr. Avery, can you come to the podium for a moment?
That it came as a afterthought. You cannot have the teachers as afterthoughts.
Yeah.
No employee of the district should be an afterthought. They need to be included, and they need to be at the table when these things are being made, decisions being made. So, Mr. Avery, I apologize for that. I didn't have anything to do with it, but we know the teachers are valuable, and they have a life to lead, so...
Certainly.
Please let them know that.
Is there anything we're forgetting, like where we're up here, that we need to address while we're talking about this?
I appreciate that you've taken those things into consideration. I mean, I had an employee, him and his wife, for both teachers, who bought tickets as soon as you published the calendar last year, and they can't work on the 20th. They... So that's a hardship for them.
They should be able to go, and they should be excused, and their time off should not be held against them, or the principal should deny it.
Years ago, I think I remember with the hurricane season that we had in the early 2000s, didn't we tack on a few minutes to each school day to make up for them? Am I remembering that?
I think it was like, was it...
Like five minutes?
It was...
Yeah, it was an odd number, like seven minutes. And the kids barely noticed it. And we were able to... Yeah, we were able to stick to the same calendar and just add a little more time. And I'm sure there were difficulties with that, too. Maybe Becca Rorin, Transportation, is saying, please be quiet, Nancy, because that was awful. You know, anything you try to do is going to affect someone. So we really need to come together here with these natural disasters and recognize that we're all trying to do the best we can and trying to keep everyone heard and honored.
And then the biggest thing of it, we can't control a storm. We don't have that ability. We can pray it away, and we were doing a lot of praying.
We sure were.
But there will have to be adjustments when storms come. We know that.
Hurricanes stink, worse than bat guano. Mr. Avery, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Okay, so then that will go on the October 8th board meeting for your vote, and then we'll get the press release out tomorrow. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, we do have a work session tomorrow, and to bring your laptops for updates. So we can...
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yeah. I wanted to bring up with the board, while I got you, I advise you all, I received correspondence that there is intended litigation against Juul on behalf of school districts nationwide. They're trying to get a nationwide coalition. So is there any interest in me maybe reaching out to this attorney and discussing it with him? If there's not, then I won't waste my time and let it go.
I'm going to say yes. I think this vaping issue has become such an issue with our kids. They're vaping younger and younger, and I have to say yes.
I concur. I was just... I have just been waiting for it to come before us at some point, and I think we need to be prepared. We don't need to get caught in limbo when it does come before us. So we need to start getting the information now.
And we spend a lot of money investigating vaping-related incidents, yes, disciplinary incidents and referrals and things like that. I think about, you know, when Joe Camel was, when they were using that to try to attract kids to smoke. And that's exactly what's happening with the Juul. It started as kind of an underground thing, where you went to like a vaping room, but of an underground thing, where you went to like a vaping room, but now it's gone completely mainstream, and I've got, you know, three boys, nineteen through twenty-four, and, and I can tell you, it, it, that amount of nicotine in a blast like that, that'll change your personality, and it'll, and it will addict you quickly, and cause all kinds of health hazards, so I hope we can nip it in the bud. To me, it's right up there with heroin, as far as being scary.
I just don't wanna see us getting into lining the pockets of a bunch of lawyers, you know?
There's that.
I don't, I don't know that that is the school board's charge to go getting all involved in one lawsuit after another, and paying lawyers and lining lawyers' pockets, I think there's people that do that, but I don't know that the taxpayers would be real thrilled with us, as we go out and ask them for referendum dollars, and they find out that we're paying lawyers with it, because I can tell you, there's a group of people here, a large segment of our population, that are not fans of ambulance chasing lawyers and getting, putting some big topic together to suck up a bunch of money, and I believe that if we start spending tax dollars paying lawyers to sue some company that, I just learned the name of it yesterday, I'm not real sure that it's gonna help us to pass our referendum.
Well, the tobacco industry certainly got their punishment, that was billions of dollars, and it took a while.
But did school boards sue them?
Probably not.
I don't know that school, I never remember our school board suing the tobacco industry.
Well, we will be using referendum money for that, that referendum money is earmarked, or what is earmarked for?
No, but if we got that, if we got that much extra money, I can tell you, this community's not gonna think we need help with the referendum, if we got money spent on a bunch of...
I don't know, it's causing us a lot of money right now to deal with it.
But our community also doesn't want...
I was gonna say, I can just reach out and get some information, it might be...
Yeah, get information.
...type fee agreement, where they're gonna take a percentage of whatever they get from tobacco, and it doesn't cost us, that would be my explanation, but...
Right.
Please, would you please check into it?
Yeah.
Maybe we could get a little present, a little presentation on the Juul situation, too, from the professionals that are seeing the effects and what it does to kids, and maybe we can nip this in the bud.
But I also like to know how many, how many disciplinary...
Well, but Stacy said she just heard of it.
I mean, disciplinary, actually, we've had this school term that resulted because of vaping, that would be interesting to see so far.
Yeah, exactly.
Cuz it's present.
Yeah.
When, when, when kids in middle school tell me that other kids are vaping, that's a serious issue.
Right in class.
Well, I just remember probably about a year ago, I was hearing about THC oil, or whatever, not understanding that's what it was, so it's just been fairly recent, but it is coming into our schools, so, Mr. Gibbs, there is a consensus to find out more information, is there anything else?
I've got time.
Okay. Mr. Cummings, we'll begin with you this evening.
Um, we're back. We heard, we heard a lot of, a lot of speakers tonight talking about prayer, and I thank Ms. King for letting me volunteer for that. I will do my due diligence in getting with them and talking about the issue with the prayer, but then we also heard from Ms. Howard, and she, she came back with something that we did ask for as a board, and she did have some questions that had not been answered, and I think the board had not got those answers either, so we're still waiting to get that report on what happened at Evergreen, are those protocols of those things that happened there, and if there is a report being worked on, is it supposed to be coming forth, and if so, when is it gonna be presented to the board? I think that's a prevalent question, I think that's a delicate question, I think their, their questions deserve to have an answer. We owe that to the community, we owe that to all those that were involved. Also, I was a little puzzled about this bat thing, I have to tell you, we voted on it, but I was a little puzzled, I, I've never heard of, never heard of guano going away, now that's a, I had to figure out what guano was, and I'm, I'm one, it's just a scientific word for excrement, bat excrement.
Dung.
BS, that's what it is, and, and so, but I was raised that it don't go away, it stinks, and it's going to smell, and as a matter of fact, I even found that it's, it's actually valuable in some countries, cuz they use it for fertilizer, bat guano, so I was just kinda, I'm kinda, kinda concerned why they're not trying to get it out there, but...
And sell it?
And sell it, or something, the district can use it.
Suck it out.
But I just want the community to know that we are addressing these issues, as far as the, wanting to know if there are health issues or surrounding the bats, because I got a lot of correspondence from parents concerning that, and other than that, I think that's it, we gotta, we got, working on that student progression plan as well, looking forward to discussion on that, so, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Thrower?
Mr. Cummings, to piggyback on your first comment, thank you for bringing it up, because that was number one on my list, as far as Evergreen is concerned, I had some other information to share, too, but the presentations tonight take priority, and I would like to know, you know, what is the plan and timeline for officially getting these folks' questions answered? I've done a little research, I'm, I'm not aware of any board policies that would have guided the way things went down, Mr. Gibbs, maybe you can help me on this one, if you're aware of a policy that I didn't know about?
No, I don't know of any policy that says how we go about transfers, so, I don't know if there's a procedure in place.
Pardon?
I don't know if there's any procedures in place that outline how the district would go about it.
Well, if, if there are, they have not been presented to me, I'm the only person I can speak for, is me.
I'm confused, do you all not know there's an investigation going on?
I think they were asking for a timeline of getting their questions answered.
For that issue that happened at the school?
Yeah, do you not know that there is an investigation going on?
They filed complaints, and the district has gone out for investigations.
So, I can't talk about it, so I'm waiting for your attorney to...
They were telling me that, Dr. Mayor, I didn't know that...
Okay, well, your attorney has hired an outside firm to do it, so I'm, I'm a little shocked that you weren't told.
J.C. Oliver received complaints in her office, she was a witness, so they now have, you know, it was, I worked with Mr. Farrow, the superintendent's attorney, to take it outside on that one, cuz it could...
Well, I, you didn't work with Mr. Farrow, so I'm, I'm concerned you all weren't told.
Okay, you're not talking about the whistleblower, are you talking about...
I'm talking about Evergreen, when the employees came here, they went and filed complaints, or at least some of them.
I didn't know, did you all know that?
But, well, the, the school board doesn't necessarily receive those, cuz they, if something comes up and discipline is handed out, it's possible those matters come before the board, so it would not be...
But we would know.
It would not be something that you guys receive briefings on regularly, I was contacted...
At least tell us that it happened.
I don't tell you when teachers are being investigated, I do not bring that to the board.
Okay, well, I just did, because I can understand your concern, but I couldn't say anything, obviously, and so I didn't want it to look like it wasn't being handled, so I, y'all need to know.
Letting us know that.
So, was, were these questions, or we asked this, was it August twenty-seventh? I think it was August twenty-seventh when we asked it, was the investigation initiated by, at that point?
It was, it was after that point, that's the night that they filed their complaints, I was contacted after that day, and said, hey, how do we handle this?
Okay.
Because she said she couldn't do it, so, and then I talked with Mr. Farrow at some point, and asked who he would agree with handling the investigation, because it was not something I do either, and it was something J.C. would normally do, except my understanding was she was a direct witness to what happened at Evergreen, cuz she was present.
So, because there is an open investigation, they will, you guys probably will not get an answer immediately from...
I have, I have no idea if there's plans for another report, or if that's gonna be the official report.
Okay.
Can we still ask the superintendent to give a report on what happened, though? Or is that different? I mean, could that...
You guys wanna report from the superintendent's perspective what happened, I mean, she would be free to do that, I would, I would refer her to her counsel on that question, I don't know if her counsel would advise her to do such a thing.
Okay.
Not right now.
There, there is an investigation, so, I, I could understand her counsel saying I would not want you to do that.
You probably would not recommend her to talk about it while the investigation is ongoing.
Okay.
All right.
So, ladies, y'all understand what's going on? So you understand where we are? And that, and that may help, that may help the community quit asking the questions, because they know there's an investigation.
My understanding is, like, numerous employees have already been interviewed, so...
Okay.
I don't know what the timeline is, I have not talked with the investigator, but I normally do not communicate with the investigator.
So let me ask you something, did they go to Ms. Oliver and ask for this investigation?
Normally, yes, she handles complaints to the district, she would handle that, and normally she would have investigated this, after they made their complaints, my understanding is...
The employees make their complaints?
Yes, when they went to her to make a complaint, my understanding is, she said, "I can't take them," so she referred them to Ms. Gary. Ms. Gary took them, but she called me after that and said, "Hey, we have these complaints, I was a witness, so I can't investigate them," so, and I asked, normally, would, you would investigate this, she said, I, she said, "Yes," so I took, and so that's when I started looking at, how do we do this, without, cuz she was uncomfortable with Ms. Gary even performing it under her, because she was involved.
I honestly didn't know that employees could go to our HR department, or our, and ask, but I knew that they, I knew that we started investigations against employees, but I didn't know employees could go and ask us to start investigations.
Absolutely.
If they've been, they've been harmed in any kind of way, or feel that they've been harmed, yes.
They can file complaints and grievances.
Yes.
Yeah, if, if...
So do they file, does it file it through the union?
No, I, I think they just went straight, I, I have not been involved, other than trying to set up the investigation, that's the extent of my involvement, because it can come to the board.
Do we need to be talking about this now, cuz if it's gonna come before us...
It's just what's going on, I don't have any specifics, I don't know which employees...
Well, we don't need any specifics, at least we know it's under, it's being handled, so that is a mystery solved a little bit, for, for the public and everyone, so that helps, just that much information's all we needed.
I do not get involved, I just set it up, so, they, it went back out to a new investigator with Runberger, Kirk Caldwell.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last thing I had on my mind, you know, clearly there, there is a lot going on, and the more transparency, the better, obviously, and so I'm thinking about the possibility, and wanting to share with the rest of the board members, see what your feelings might be about having our, what it would take to have our work sessions also televised, you know, the, the audio is okay, and I think it was this former board, maybe, that finally got us out of the Stone Ages and having to go buy the CD, and now they're on YouTube, but I was just wondering about the possibility of what it would take, and ideas and an idea, but it's the implementation piece and the details, I'm wondering how effortful that would be, because it's certainly, in my view, I think if the technology's there, and it's reasonably easy to do, that in the spirit of transparency, that they should be televised.
Thank you for coming up, Mr. Chris.
Certainly, we would treat, my department would treat that the same as we do any other broadcast, we would make that happen, if that's what you want to do. Previous boards have expressed the desire not to have the work sessions televised, for whatever reason, so really, the decision truly is yours. In, in all honesty, I'm fifty percent down right now in my department, I have a vacancy that we're hoping to fill very soon, and one of my employees is on FMLA at the moment, so there are four people in my department, so I have two, and they're both on the other side of that wall, so it would just require a, a little rearrangement of their schedule, but certainly, if that's what the board desires, we'll make that happen.
Does it take, so it takes more manpower when we...
Takes two people, because you've gotta have a person for the cameras, yes.
So, how about as a board, we just mull over, think about it, mull over it, and then we can go back, come back and maybe when he gets more people...
Well, I don't think we wanna do it until Kevin's fully staffed.
Right, I was gonna say, until he's fully staffed, so we'll come back and revisit this at a later date.
But we definitely wanna revisit, cuz I, I too like the idea of it being televised versus just recording.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Mr. Stacy?
Okay. Because, one of the reasons I need to chat about this tonight is because it's not televised, and the recordings, sometimes it's hard to tell who's talking and, and what's happening when people are listening, and for the, for the public, I wanted them to know a little bit about what went on at our workshop, and I've been passing on board concerns lately, but I, I feel that this is one that I do need to, to talk about, and it is the Student Progression Plan. It is probably one of the most important things right now, that can make the biggest difference in our academic improvement in our school system. Our goal is academic success of this board, and getting the biggest bang for the dollars the taxpayers give us. We can't have it if the Student Progression Plan does not comply with state statute, and it does not. And I do wanna clarify, as I'm speaking along about this, this is not pointed at Dr. Mayor, because the Student Progression Plan that's in place, possibly her administration might not have even fully known about this issue. This is a Student Progression Plan, I've been on the school board for seven years, and we've just kind of rubber stamped it, I, I didn't understand even what it was about, I didn't understand the statutes, and, and I didn't understand why we were, were just passing kids on, I didn't know it had anything to do with the Student Progression Plan, until I sat down and went through it with a fine-tooth comb, and I, and I pulled Elachua County's Student Progression Plan, Citrus County's, and one other, I don't even remember which one it was, and looked to see, oh, St. John's, to see what is different about theirs and us, and what's about this retention, and that's what started me on this goose chase, because this issue was in place long before Dr. Mayor was here. But I'm, I'm talking about it a little bit tonight, because we were on audio, but if people wanna hear more information, because I did give more information at the workshop that I'm gonna give tonight about this, they can go onto the audio and, and hear a little bit more about it. I've even got more data here, I've got so much, I, I have been just researching to death on where, where we were, I'm gonna be sharing it with Ms. Beck when we go into our meetings, and I've just got tons of information about so many things, and I'm an information gatherer, and everybody knows that. We are basically academically behind where we were in proficiency in 2016, under Superintendent Tomlin, and this, this information that I have here basically points to the direction that possibly, had we not gone in and moved a single principal from 2016, left them all in the same place, we might be doing a whole lot better academically, because over the last three years, only approximately thirty, thirty-ish percent, thirty-four percent of our schools have actually improved, as compared to the state, where sixty-seven percent have declined. So, the chaotic musical chairs this district has done to try to, try to get this place under control, but the basic issue, the root problem, was the Student Progression Plan. But we have a self-inflicted nightmare that we have put our great educators through, trying to fix a problem that we weren't getting to the root of. And for thirty years, I've spoken at that podium, or I've been on the school board, and I've brought data before you, not one time has this district ever, in all those years, said my data wasn't correct. I gave them chances, the data that I've gathered, long before I was on the school board, changed many things in this district that I presented, and, and I'm not, I don't believe I'm wrong on this, I believe I'm dead right on what's been happening with our schools, that's caused this decades-long infectious culture of social promotion that's been going on. I also have facts from Mr. McGowan's office, I'm sharing a little bit tonight, I shared with the school board the other day, showing that, I only looked at second grade, there was a reason, because second graders were moving into third grade, I agree that kindergarten, first grade's a place, but I looked at second graders, because they were the ones moving into third, I wanted to see why our third grade just plummeted like it did. I found out that ten percent of our second graders are two-grade levels or more behind, but we only held back a handful. Therefore, the only criteria outside of ESE disability, or ESOL, that a principal can give for promoting hundreds of students two-grade levels behind, is that they were just old enough to go up. That is social promotion, that is one hundred percent illegal in the state of Florida. Due to this practice of many years, we have been setting our principals up to illegally socially promote, thus, they could be, they could have become serious scapegoats, because we gave them, this school board gave them no comprehensive guidelines on student promotion, which are required of the board by the first sentence of the state statute. The data shows that, I believe that there is a correlation between social promotion that we have been practicing, and poor district proficiency. We retain the lowest percentage of students at K-two of all sixty-seven districts, and we are currently sixth districts from the bottom in the state, ranked at sixty-first, when you're looking at proficiency, not learning gains. This downward spiral puts us five placement, placings lower than we were when Mr. Tomlin was here. The organization, I've done a lot of research on that, they use the same ranking methodology that the, that the Florida Department of Education used back when they did rankings, I think it was around 2010, 2009, the, the legislature had the Florida Department of Education rank districts, and they use basically the same methodology. The next data dig I did comes from the Florida Department of Education, where I found that high-performing districts, to include those with higher numbers of low socioeconomic families, they are retaining up to ten thousand percent more of their K-two, level-one students than we are, and those districts are in the top five. So, it's not a, a low socioeconomic issue, it's that we're not getting the kids, we're putting the kids ahead before they're ready. I wanna talk a little bit about learning gains now. Learning gains are important to assist us in helping our lowest-performing students particularly. However, never has this district in the past, or any district in the state, faced academic exceptionalism, like we have been attempting to do upon learning gains instead of proficiency. This has caused an entire smokescreen of false information that has gone out, and our attempt to do... that has gone out, and our attempt to do that is record-setting. Our PR man, Mr. Christian, gets a lot of awards, because he is so good at what he does. He could work for any president. He's a great PR man. He could put lipstick on a pig and make her pretty. And Joe Callahan could print the story, because he does what we pay him to do. He makes us look good. But I want to help folks to understand the importance of learning gains, but also how it does not compare to proficiency in determining a district's academic exceptionalism. I'm going to give you an example, the best example I could think of to explain learning gains to everybody on the air, and whoever wants to listen to this, YouTube tomorrow. Let's say we have Wake High School playing Lake Shore High on Football Friday night, okay? Let's say Lake Shore scores two touchdowns, and they make 14 points. Wake High does not score at all, but they did accrue more offensive yardage gains by the end of the game than Lake Shore, who had scored. Let's even say non-scoring Wake High set a conference record at yardage gained Friday night. Let's say Mr. Christian was told to make Wake High...
I want to ask that you not use our employees' names like...
Well, okay, but yeah, he's a good PR guy. I mean, okay, let's say our PR guy was asked to make Wake High look like a great high school. So, the next morning, the poor winning Lake Shore coach wakes up to read the newspaper headlines, and here's what the newspaper reporter wrote. Wake High School football team gains more yardage than Lake Shore, and in fact, more yardage than the team in the conference Friday night. It was record-breaking. Next week, Wake High goes to play Vanguard Friday night. Go Wake High Tigers. Lake Shore's players were not even mentioned. They were proficient at scoring, but that didn't count. The yardage gained was the convoluted story to make Wake High look good without being good. That was exactly what happened here in July, when learning gains hit Mr. Callahan's front-page story with a little mention of proficiency. You see, it isn't learning gains that makes a school district academically excellent. And no, no superintendent has ever tried to pull that one over anyone's eyes. It is proficiency, just as yardage gained, without a running back proficient in scoring, will never get a football team up in the rankings of the winning. So, no high-performing school district boasts of learning gains without the other piece called proficiency. It is in two parts. The only problem is that we've only got one part, and we need to understand, as we're bringing in another superintendent, that a lot of this hype about how great the district's doing and that sort of thing, we are behind proficiency where we were, as compared to the state three years ago, especially at our elementary schools and our rankings of our schools. And I have it here. I'll share it with Ms. Beck. It does, you can have, proficiency does help our school grades. You can have a B school in the state where 65 student, percent of the students are not proficient, and they stay on the bottom 300 forever. You can have B schools on the bottom 300 forever, because all it means is that they're picking up learning gains. But if they don't get proficient, they're never moving from that spot. We had 11 schools there last year. We've got 11 again. Yes, we've improved in some areas of proficiency, particularly at our middle school, but because our foundation of elementary schools declined at all three grade levels tested this year, as compared to the state, and over the last three years, we are now ranked lower in proficiency than this district has ever been ranked in Florida. Elementary school grades are driven by the learning gains of the proficient, of the mainly of the, of the lower quartile. Without proficiency, these schools get As from learning gains, but they still never get off the list. In conclusion, currently, our progress, student progression plan is not and has not been compliant with the law that states in the first sentence is the board will have a comprehensive plan for grade-level promotion. I admit to being shocked that after I have for two years in a row brought it to this district, that why are we not retaining students? Why are we putting students two-grade levels behind? Why are we doing that to our teachers? That it's just ignored. But it can't be ignored any longer, because I've now exposed it. It will have to be dealt with. I admit to being shocked that after all of that discussion, we had 10 minutes allotted to talk about the student progression plan the other day at the, at the workshop, and very few changes had been made, basically none. But now that I've exposed it, we have no option but to become compliant. And this is the year, Marion County, we shall stop illegal social promotion. I expect our plan to read as the others I pulled from high-performing districts, where teachers are empowered to become a dominant factor in this decision for students. A popular mantra for all good educators has always been, students at K-2 are learning to read, and at third-grade children are reading to learn. We in Marion County are sending general ed students who tested at first-grade level to third, so how can they learn? How can they read to learn? I will do everything in my power before retiring to make sure not another student is set up to fail in life, as we have done thousands in this districts over the years. Parents, I have a message to you. Better get your heads wrapped around the fact that 2019 was the last year Johnny, who was two-grade levels behind, will get promoted, causing our teachers to be so heinously overburdened. Teachers and parents, please hear me. That help is on the way. Please don't resign to go to Citrus County or nearby county or retire early. I beg you to have confidence in this board, who together wrote our goals, which included putting students first. We take turns reading that every Tuesday night to remind us of why we are sitting here. Dearest teachers, I am so sorry we have made you work so unnecessarily hard by putting students two-grade levels behind in your classrooms, thanks to our culture of illegal social promotion, making your jobs extra difficult. Principals, I apologize to you, because the state law is that you have the final placement decision based upon your following of the very specific comprehensive plan, which we have never given you to follow, never. We have been setting you up to break the law and give you no defense for yourself if you are accused of social promoting by a parent. At the workshop meeting Thursday, the board agreed that Mrs. Beck could put a committee, a committee together to write our comprehensive plan to include specified assessments. And I want our teachers and principals to know I will attend every single meeting. And just in case, any teachers or administrators out there want to feed me information that will help us in this process, that I might need to know, you can call me any time of the day, seven days a week. Thank you.
I'm going to change focus a little bit. I want to do some thank yous. First of all, I want to let the public know that tomorrow, we will be looking at our strategic plan. Last year, we spent a lot of time putting a strategic plan together, where for the first time, I believe, we have some measurable benchmarks and outcomes. We will be looking at those outcomes to see, did we succeed, and resetting those outcomes and looking again at our strategic plan. It is a very important workshop. The strategic plan really does drive what we do. So, I encourage that if you can attend at nine o'clock in the morning, to please try to listen. I also am very pleased to see that on our consent agenda, we had applications for three new business partners for Evergreen Forest and Westport High School. And I want to thank the CEP, because they totally stepped up to the plate and advertised the fact that we needed business partners. And I want to thank them, because I believe that these partners came through because of their efforts. I also was at the CEP this morning, where the career technical educators in Mark Vanello's positions, the directors from several counties, were there. And they were talking about their career planning guides. Many of them don't have them yet, and Mark Vanello shined. We are very far ahead of where many counties are, and they were very pleased and going to use our format and our plan as a template to help them get started. So, I was very pleased with that. I was also this morning at the Public Education Foundation Board of Directors meeting, and the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations, a couple of years ago, put a set of standards in place for all of the public education foundations in Marion County, in, in the state of Florida. And these standards are very strategic and stringent standards, that if education foundations follow them, then they will be successful. And our foundation is following them, and they were rated excellent on the standards. So, I'm very pleased. And also, our Take Stock in Children program received their scorecard from the state organization, and out of 100 points on mentors, students, academics, just several different things, out of 100 points that they could get, they got 100 points, one of the few in the state. So, I am very pleased with what's going on with our Public Education Foundation and with the CEP and our CTE program. Thank you. What? Oh, this Thursday night? Oh, for Night of Hope. Oh, my Children's Alliance, this Thursday night, the Children's Alliance has our annual Night of Hope, where we honor the victims and survivors of domestic abuse. The Children's Alliance is very involved in this, because the number-two reason children are removed from their homes is because of domestic and family violence. For the first year, we will be awarding four ladies with what we call our Conqueror Award, that have gotten out of their abusive situations with their children, that are, have moved past and are not only working and doing well, but advocating and mentoring others. Reverend Cummings has agreed to give our invocation, so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Always good to have a pastor on board.
A little bit of housekeeping. On November 19th, we're going to have our organizational meeting. And right now, on November 21st, we have a scheduled work session, but we don't have anything on there yet. Would we be interested in maybe having our organizational meeting and then moving into just a regular work session, rather than us coming back on Thursday? Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll move that. We have a consensus for that. And then, I also have been approached about the student progression plan for the special area teachers. When I say special areas, like Eric, you may not know, but it's like the art and music and PE. Okay, so when you hear me say special areas, that's what I'm talking about. Okay, so I had some concerns presented to me. And some of the concerns were that teachers were told on the first day back from their summer vacation, that they were never fully explained as to why the special needs areas were moved to pass and fail grades. And if you think back to earlier this week, we were talking about the mastery and the pass, what was it, progression. They explained that the new system doesn't foster success with some of the components and the domains that the teachers are observed in, in their special areas. They also feel that the new grading system has further eroded special areas credibility in the elementary system. They feel that primary grades with M, meeting standards, or P, progression, mastery means anywhere from 70 to 100%. Progression is 50 to 59%. So, basically, it's pass or fail. So, they feel like they're eroding their profession, you know, what they're doing. They also feel that the new system rendered useless any sort of documentation through using detailed rubrics based on state standards. And then, I guess there's also a concern about conduct grades for their interims. There's not given any, so they don't even have leverage for that. So, the lack of the conduct is devolving the special area program and primary, and the lack of reward and consequences with the students. So, basically, in this, it's almost like everybody passes. You know what I mean? And, and they also shine light on, you know, sometimes students are excellent in physical education, art, or music, and those children aren't being recognized either. So, I would like us to reevaluate what we were told, and hearing maybe that there was teacher input, or I'm not sure what, but I heard the opposite. And there's many concerns about the new grading system. So, Ms. Stacy, I guess you're going to be on that committee? So, if you can please send that message from us, and I'm not sure if the other board members have heard anything. I, that's the first...
I haven't heard anything. I was assuming that from what we were told at the workshop, that that was the grading system that they wanted to move to. So, now I'm hearing...
I heard opposite, and I have pretty good detailed...
All right. Well, I, I think it's worth exploring.
Exploring and looking into...
And have, did you have a conversation with Ms. Crowder? Is she the one...
I haven't had any conversation. This is just kind of brought, but you know, this was, we just discussed it last week, and then, Ms. Stacy, I hear you're on that committee.
Well, isn't Ms. Crowder supposed to be coming to the work session?
She's music. I mean, all special areas...
All special areas. She's the art and music, but PE would be there.
Who's over PE in the district?
Um, that is now, preliminary, I think, is Amy Poitier.
So, are they, that we have a work session scheduled?
To make sure it's getting all the same, everything.
So, can we just ask those people to come? I know Ms. Crowder's already asked. Can we ask the PE specials to be here as well? Because some, that way, we can get, we can ask the questions directly.
Yeah. I want to compliment this board, because I don't know how many years, the student progression plan has just been a rubber stamp item. It's just come before the board boom, because board members didn't understand it. We didn't delve into it. And I want to compliment you for like, Ms. King. Now, we've, you know, now the specialties are interested. And so, this is a time where we can work with Dr. Mayor and Ms. Beck and everybody to get a really effective student progression plan. For the first time, I mean, our student progression plan is so old, it's just been rubber stamped, rubber stamped for so many years, with a few little tweaks here and there, as the statutes changed, you know, they'd throw stuff in. But this is the first time ever I remember delving into it like this. And it is so important.
It is. And it, and it goes along with the state school grading system. And there is something wrong with a state school grading system, when you can be, as in Evergreens' case, two points away from a C, and yet have 70% of your fifth graders significantly below grade level in reading.
Because it doesn't mean it, the grading, nothing.
And, and, oh, it, it's, it's really, really troubling. You know, first, second, third, fourth, 0% proficient in math right now.
And all we're doing is passing that.
And all we're doing is, is passing them. In, in fifth grade, math, 1% proficient. Now, I know this is end of your view, but still, these kids are going on to middle school. And so, it's, it's a two-pronged thing, because the state has put out this type of grading system that invites these kinds of things to happen, you know? So, so let's make sure that the culpability is well-spread. And, and in the end, who suffers? The teachers and the kids.
And the school grading system, in fact, I talked to a couple of the people at the DOE two years ago, and said, why can't we have a real school grade, like based upon proficiency and based upon what's really happening, instead of based upon unicorns that we can't even really figure out, because it's these gains that are like...
And learning gains are fantastic, you know, hats off for improvement.
But there's two parts. But there's two parts. Without proficiency, you're never going to get off the bottom 300. I don't care how many As you get. And so, that's good.
Okay, thank you. All right. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through the September 5th, 2019. Mrs. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
May I?
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 20-002, JD 20-003, and JD 20-004 with educational services through the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thuer, seconded by Ms. McCall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Thuer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Do we, are we unanimous? Okay, thank you. All right. And the motion passed unanimously. And our meeting is adjourned. And our meeting is adjourned at, it looks like 7:50 PM.